I actually put clothes on the line today.
Enough windows.
Yeah. Get some breeze.
Oh, there it is. Good, thank you. All right, call to me in order. First time, pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you. Susan, my honor, the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands on a nation, under our interdissable liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to our earlier meetings, so we can get this done and get off to the council meeting for their six o'clock meeting. So, we have approved of the minutes March thirty first and April tenth. So moved.
Second.
We have a second, all right, we're in rapid move, all right. We have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Approving the minutes as presented, unanimous. Uh, next up, approving roll accounts dated April third, twenty twenty five, the amount of three hundred and eighty eight thousand, thirty seven dollars, ninety seven cents. And April seventeenth, twenty twenty five, the amount of one hundred and ninety nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and fifty one cents. We have a motion.
Don't move.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the rolls as presented, unanimous. The board of committees, board committee reports. Okay, administrative reports. All right, because we have a short meeting, we're reports are minimum, so we have Mr. Bell and Mr. Oliphant, professional development, I guess, is one of their reports.
I will let him do all the talking.
You're just taking credit. All right.
Buen suave. Buenas tardes, atodos. Uh, I'm Sean Oliphant, I teach Spanish at the high school exclusively, uh, exclusively now. I taught at the junior high for a few years during the introductory Spanish course as well. But most of my twenty-two years has been just at high school. Uh, my purpose in being here is firstly to say thank you, and secondly, to give you a quick glimpse into, uh, the classroom. On March twenty eighth, Sarah Bullwinkle, the new French teacher, and I attended the annual ME conference at UMaine, uh, their Lewiston campus. ME stands for Educators for a Multilingual Maine. And is the Main Language Teachers Association. Uh, the annual conference is always a great professional development opportunity, um, well worth attending for sure. Uh, though there's always a keynote speaker and then many sessions on the techniques and strategies of teaching languages. This year was no exception, and in fact, was the best year yet, uh, from what I saw. We were lucky to have an expert, uh, a Texas Teacher of the Year in Spanish, to lead us, uh, in some very powerful classroom strategies that I've already begun to employ with great success. Uh, sometimes asking a teenager to make, uh, strange sounds in front of their peers can be a tricky proposition, and many are self-conscious about speaking in another language. Uh, maybe you remember that experience yourself. Uh, reluctance always plays a role in this type of learning, but I must say that it was startling how quickly some students went from quietly, somewhat begrudgingly participating at times, to eager. Uh, it was remarkable to see hands going up, uh, all around the room, smiles and excitement from students who've been pretty passive most of the year. Uh, adjusting my approach and using these techniques has had a huge impact in my classroom. Uh, the cost of attending this conference was probably a relatively small one, I'm sure, when considering the budget as a whole, but it is an expense that I take seriously, and I wanted to reassure you that that investment has paid and will continue to pay great dividends for our school. So thank you for that opportunity. I also wanted to highlight another effort that is underway to help student achievement with the potential to not only improve academic outcomes, but to aid in the development of our, of our students and to help the adults as well. Uh, today, there's an increasing number of young people in the midst of mental health crisis. Perhaps you've noticed adolescents in your circles or have just observed in public the difficulty that some young people are having relating to others and even to each other. In fact, it would be hard to spend a significant amount of time, I think, around young folks today without seeing that many are anxious, depressed, and fragile in some ways. This is not just a case of kids these days. My colleagues and I are seeing profound changes in how students are behaving in the school community and how they're approaching academics. Their ability to persevere in the face of moderately difficult challenges has greatly lessened. Sometimes even seemingly routine and basic academic paths, asks are becoming mired in digressions. The reteaching of basic skills, reviewing material that has not been retained, or instructing on simple social skills that permit decorum and allow fairness for all. So the question is, what has happened? A number of us have undertaken a study of Jonathan Haidt's book, The Anxious Generation, How the Great Rewiring of Childhood Is Causing an Epidemic of Mental Illness. It has provided some key insights for us into what is interfering with student success. We're digging into the challenges our students face generally and in the classroom in particular in order to figure out how to best adjust our approach as teachers. It is just a first step. Much more will have to be understood before we can effectively tune our educational practices to meet these needs. This is yet another investment that has the potential to change the game for our school community in a very positive way. So again, thank you for the resources that you have provided and for your trust in us to educate the young folks of Winslow and its surrounding communities.
Very good. Anybody have any questions? Sounds like good stuff. Thank you. So it's good to hear good news and positive results from professional development. All right, there being new other administrative reports. Um, we got the finance report from our main.
Uh, so eighty-one point four percent of the fiscal year has passed and seventy-seven point six five percent of the budget has been spent. Um, we're actually in the same exact goal as we were last month, where this week we have a payroll to be posted and, uh, a lot of accounts to be posted. Uh, last time when that happened, that brought that percentage about two points closer together. Uh, we're also at that time of the year where now that we're back from April break, we'll be talking to, um, payroll and accounts to be able to get some projections for remainder of the year. That's information for the next couple of weeks. Where we stand.
Get to the end of the year with no surprises.
Good. I'm just taking.
All right. Do you have any comments? Peter's turn.
Just a reminder that we have a policy meeting on Tuesday, May sixth, and I have some voluntary transfers to report to you. Um, Amber Valet is moving from grade three teacher to the Winslow Elementary School art teacher position, being aided by Kip, that we saw on the resignation the last time we met. Nicole Mativia, grade five teacher to grade three teacher. And Terry Curian, grade four teacher to grade five teacher. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right. Um, except this public comment. I don't, we have anybody here from the public, so I will dispense of reading my introduction to public comment. But for those that are tuned in online, um, there is an introduction there if you wish to speak at public comment. Uh, but, uh, we always invite, uh, the ability to write us emails anytime, and, uh, we will gather information with that due at our earliest ability. But I think that sums up for public comment for now. So we will move on. Old business, we do not have any, so new business, request for out-of-state trip. Chris, big.
What do you have or what do you want me to tell? Well. I don't want to explain all the things if you have.
Basically, what I, what I had mentioned, Chris, is that you have a proposal for U-Drama students. This is something that you've done in the past, not all the details have been ironed out at this point, but you're looking for concept approval, and you have, because you want to get fundraising started, um, for this group if the board gives you that concept approval.
Your story.
And you are going to talk about some of the things that have been done.
So I'd like to take a group of music and drama students to New York City. This would be next April vacation, they would not miss any school. This would not cost the school anything, everything would be fundraised by students or just paid for by students. If students have a financial hardship, we offer lots of opportunities to fundraise. We've had students fundraise the entire trip, um, from time to time in the past years. We've not done this trip since COVID. Since then, costs have gone up, which is why I don't have an exact cost per person. I also sort of need to see how many students are interested so that I can, you know, things cost more or less depending on the number when you're offering, you're getting group rates. Um, so I, but I need approval to go forward with the idea of a trip so that I can talk to students and parents and find out how many are interested, so we can start fundraising and see what the viability of the trip is.
And while in New York, you do a Broadway play, I'm assuming.
What we've done in the past, it's not a performance, we're not performing.
Right.
We're going to experience the culture. Um, past years, we've seen up to three different Broadway performances, some musicals, some straight plays. Um, we've toured places like Radio City Music Hall, um, the NBC Studios. We've done the nine eleven museum. Um, we've done just walks through Central Park, um, walking up, you know, let's go walk up with that. Let's go, you know, just some things that, you know, things that teenagers are interested in, but also a lot of different, you know, really exciting cultural, um, learning things. We go to Metropolitan Museum of Art every time. We've had talk backs with casts of Broadway shows, we've had workshops with, like, one or two Broadway actors with our booth for an hour, so just talking about your path, how you get there, sorts of things, so it's a really great cultural educational experience for the kids.
And this is freshman through senior or?
High school students.
Yeah. Don't forget the pizza and the Superbowl hot dogs, just saying. And is it for a select group or do you put it out?
So first I offer it to music and theater students, and then if we have more seats to be filled, you know, it's open to anyone, but I try to start with music and theater kids.
If it comes together, I think Bella would be interested in that, probably chaperone, so keep us in mind.
Absolutely.
You know, my wife, when it's a chaperone, when our eldest son went down there, it was a blast.
Yeah.
Yeah, they talked about the bus driver and they, just about all the different things that they saw, and it was, yeah.
My daughter did it as well, and, yeah, it was a great experience.
No end of things.
Yeah, we just, we haven't been since COVID. Last year, if you remember, we did a trip to Boston, because I didn't want to start with New York. I wanted to do Boston first, and that was a huge success, so now I'm looking, okay, let's go back to New York already.
It's a nice time of year.
If the vacation in New York is not a hardship.
Yeah, it's not bad at all.
Sounds like, it's good that it's coming back, because I think it is a great trip. And for those kids, it really does open their eyes up to what theater at that level is.
Well, I think it's also gives some kids who maybe don't get past Portland
Right.
the opportunity to see.
We always have students who have literally never left the town.
Right. Some options.
Everybody on, well, she's just looking for concept approval at this point, I think it's, it's more of a, I don't know, do we put it as a?
And if you'd like to give me a date, like, I would like to know X, Y, Z by, you know, certain date, I can do, you know, just.
Well, ultimately, and I know we have a form thing for out-of-state trips and whatever, so.
And I filled it out to the best of my ability.
Yeah. And, um, once you see that on a timely basis, and I guess we can both, I guess, all in favor of, uh, concept approval at this point for the trip?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
One question, do you usually have, um, more people that want to go than space, or do you usually have?
We've never had more people than space. That would be a great thing to have, like, alternates, you know, but we've hasn't been a problem.
How many usually go?
Uh, we were about forty-five, I believe, last time, twenty nineteen.
And I think having them fundraise or work up in area is a good idea too, to teach them a little responsibility, rather than just making mom and dad pay for it.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big group, yeah. It is.
I try to keep the chaperone to student ratio at about four to one. So that when we're wandering in the middle of Manhattan, you know, I as a chaperone have to keep my eyes on four people.
Right. That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Not perfect.
I ditched the hair and the toe with, and floor of New York is, you don't want more than that.
I think I'm speaking for myself, I trust you to let us know when you know your incremental whatevers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're good.
Yeah, good luck.
All right. Um, second reading of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Winslow School Calendar.
Yeah, before we get to that, I want to go back to Earl had brought up a point, a very valid point. Express concern regarding the long stretch for teachers which leads up to April break. If there's a way to give them some time during that period. So, um, to Earl's credit, he acknowledged that there are a lot of factors to consider, and one of those factors is the similar days for the sending schools. We can't have that, no less than five dissimilar days with the Tex Center or with the Council. Um, interesting that you mentioned that, Earl, because I went back and I looked at the calendar and Wannable has moved their December late start day to match ours. I don't know if you're aware of that, so that we didn't, so we wouldn't have it, because the late start this year was on a different day. And it did cause a little bit of a problem, so I didn't know if that's why you had, you had mentioned that, but they have moved theirs to match ours. So that is a concern. Um, but, so I brought, also brought it back to the administrative team, to have a conversation with them. And, um, again, sending school calendar and the complications involved for us to find a common day is, is problematic, so that's something we should start on when it first comes out in the fall of next year to consider, to consider that. Um, Erica reminded me, um, and it was a really good point, that the elementary school teachers do have a common day on March thirteenth for the parent-teacher conferences, so they do get that day that you're talking about, that, that is there for them. Um, because of that different parent-teacher conference schedule that they have. Uh, the other buildings, um, on that day, you know, the, they do have in-service time, but it's a little bit layered, because it's not a full district, because you don't have everywhere to go across from. So they do get some of that time that you were talking about, time in their classrooms, that would be a time when that would happen more than, than other times. Um, the also, the other thing that Erica mentioned, which is a good point, was that she reminded me that since it's a long month, it affords teachers time to plan field trips and other activities without having to work around vacations and assessments, because that is the assessment time as well. So they use that long, a lot, to do some of those things that they normally wouldn't do, so they kind of take advantage of that. And then the other piece that I went back and I looked at is whether it's always a factor in this. We usually have a day off during that time, which kind of naturally takes care of what you're, what you're saying. So with all of those pieces, I think the best thing we could do is to, is to look at the calendar early next year to see if there's something we could do. And it's not just us, it's all of the communities that feed into the Tex Center, to see if we could do something in March. Because I think everybody feels the same, it's a long fall.
If a vacation came, it'll be too late this year, from my perspective as a teacher.
Right. So, and I want to let you know that we did look.
Appreciate that. Okay, well, with that being said, do we have a motion to approve the second read of the school calendar? So moved, second.
Whatever.
Make same one up first, we'll give it a second. Um, any further discussion?
Have we found anything about the elementary school and the late start breakfast?
We can offer that to kids, and it has been offered to those who want to go and eat, and so it is available to them. But it's not, we haven't done a universal, everybody. But there are snacks and miracles invested, I'll talk about that, but there are snacks available to the kids. That's something that we can look at and say, if you want to.
Because I know, like, the older kids, it's all, they all get it from junior high. But my little ones don't get that option, or at least they don't know about that option, because they have snack, but not all kids get to bring snack from home. And that's my biggest thing is, I could feed constantly, but I know there's a lot of kids in our district that don't. I know it's the ones I was thinking about.
Find a way to feed them.
Yep.
Do you want to mention that? Um, I just noticed on the last page, excuse me, it said, early release days, this was electrical.
I mentioned that last time too.
Yeah.
Well, I think we probably just didn't relay the message.
Yeah. You don't have early release days unless it's snow day, right?
So it just needs to be changed to late start, or just take it off.
Just take it off.
Yeah.
We'll just take it off because it's not there for anybody else.
Right. Oh, right, right.
Either that or at the time, just for the other two buildings, you want them to.
But there's no more early release days, it's snow.
Correct.
And then it differs on, on the, on the storm center.
I just didn't know if I'd be confusing.
I think it is, we'll just take it off.
Okay. Anything else on the calendar? All good points? All right, all in favor of approving the second read of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar? Any readings? Next up is the first reading of policy ACAB hazing.
Yeah, sure. So this, the policy committee looked at this and unanimously thought that the sample policy of hazing was, was updated, was a much better policy, spoke more specifically to some of the, um, components of hazing and the things that students face today. And so the, the thought was to completely strike our existing hazing and to replace it with the policy that's in your packet, um, with the updated, um, the updated language. Also, that makes references to our other policies, our cross-references, and we do have all of those policies, and it does make cross-references to those. And everybody on the committee felt this is a much better, a much better document to use for our, for our school system. And it comes to you with a unanimous, um, ought to move forward.
The policy, our old policy, our current policy had not been updated since two thousand and sixteen, so it's going to evolve since then. Do we have a motion to approve the first read of policy ACAB?
Don't move.
No motion, do we have a second? Second from all. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in, all in favor of approving the first read of policy ACAD. Okay, unanimous. Next up is the second reading, uh, excuse me, reaffirmation of policy BBBA, Board Number Qualifications. You have that in your packet, um, just a couple of updated references, but otherwise, it's the same policy we've had. Do we have a motion to approve? The
Don't move.
Second, the, uh, the
Second.
Reaffirmation, that was what I was looking for, yeah, reaffirmation of policy BBBA. The first and a second?
A second.
Yeah. Um, any other discussion? Looks like we have one.
Um, there's no mention of a requirement to live, stay, to live within the district that you're selected in.
I believe that is in the charter. There is a number of other things in the charter as well. Yeah.
That's in the charter.
That is in the charter.
Okay, it mentions the district, okay.
Yeah.
So all it says here is must reside in town, doesn't say must reside in their district.
Yeah, and are there any qualifications of the office prescribed by the town, it's our charter or by law, so that's, it's in there.
It's in there, okay.
We did pull that up and compare it to make sure that
Okay.
there's a number of other things in the charter that this doesn't qualify, but allows us to have our own policy.
Okay.
To reference the charter as well. So, okay, so we have.
Who made, who made words to this then?
I think Steve, yeah.
Second.
Karen. So. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the reaffirmation of policy BBBA. Any readings? Vote on appointments, we have
Permission to add Caitlin Reagan, ed tech one.
Okay, so we're looking to add, there's no objection. Uh, Caitlin Reagan as an ed tech one to the elementary school resource room. We're good with that.
If anybody wants to see a new hire form we have, if you want to see it.
Okay.
Moving, take all five appointments as one, second.
Your motion second taken as one, any discussion online? All favor of taking them as a group, unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve the group of appointments?
Don't move.
Move, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Karen. Uh, any discussion of the group? All in favor of the group of appointments, unanimous. Very good. Um, resignations, we've got a few. Notably, our elementary principal. We will miss you, but we do wish you well with your future endeavors.
Looks like yellow Jeep.
And the yellow Jeep, obviously.
Sunshine, get the name right.
Sunshine Jeep.
But you can't leave yet, so we'll see you one more before then. Uh, so, thank everybody for their service and this service should assume to Winslow. Peter has already accepted those. Other business, um, I don't think we have any other business. We do have an executive session. Um, before we go into that, I'll mention for those online and those that are here, we actually have a special meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock, executive session.
Thursday.
Excuse me, Thursday. I got another meeting tomorrow night, okay, that's, my mind was already on. Okay, Thursday. Thursday at one o'clock. Excuse me, six o'clock. See, these five o'clock meetings are just way too early. Anyway. So that's Thursday. Um, then our regular scheduled meeting will be on May nineteenth, which because of the Memorial Day holiday, it's a little earlier than our usual fourth, Monday. So, that being the case. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session per MRS A subsection four zero five six D labor contract discussions, teachers' contract.
Second. All favor of going into executive session. All right. Is that a unanimous, was that a unanimous, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Very good.
I am going to.
Thank you all.
Save us a seat over there.
I'm going to excuse myself from desk because.
Alright, we're back on. Okay. So we are out of executive session. Okay, and. So the only action we got left on our agenda is to vote on the. Contract for the Window Education Association for the teacher's contract for. For twenty-five through September first, twenty twenty-five through August three first, twenty twenty-eight. Do we have a motion to approve that contract?
So move.
Second, do we have a second? Alright, we already had our executive session discussion, so if nothing else, all in favor of approving the teacher's contract as presented. Alright, be as unanimous. Thank you very much. So, alright, uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor of adjournment? Alright, unanimous, we're adjourned.
And the.
See you Thursday.
But the meeting over at the town council, they've already taken their first vote.
This, this Thursday.
For their budget.
Yeah.
They took the first vote and it was.
This is the second read, so.
Got it.
So we're not expected to be there?
I think.
I think it's the first thing.
It is the first thing.
What's that?
The budget, the second read is the first thing on the agenda.
Right, so you want us to go there?
If you just want to listen.
It wouldn't be critical, I don't think, like some of the years.